Good evening, everyone who's joining us by Zoom and in our studio audience. Tonight is our April 5th workshop. Our primary focus of this evening's workshop is the budget, but we do have some items of business as well. First item is opportunity request to vote to add or modify agenda items. I would like to add to the agenda recommendation from the Rec Commission for a fifth member. Someone like to second that? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Announcements? So. A bunch. Hydrant flushes ongoing, making their way down through the village. Street cleaners are following behind, so you'll see that vehicle out as well. Next yard waste is April 13th. And after that, April 27th, there has been question again about why the yard waste picked up in the same truck. It does get picked up at the same truck and it gets sorted at Royal. I have visited on sorting days and watched the process and recorded the process. And I'm welcome, I'm happy to show that video to anyone to assure you that yes, the yard waste is separated from the garbage at at the Royal location. We are on schedule to begin the Aqueduct Reconnection on Monday, Michelle, the 10th. It's scheduled to roll through mid-July. There are three primary locations. They'll start first on village property at the water plant and then come west on Fishkill, roughly west on Fishkill, to the valves in front of town, the town barn. And then finally at the Aqueduct right-of-way site. There will be some traffic interruptions, but they should be minimal. Contractors aware that that's a a major commuter corridor and also first responder access way. And we are communicating with neighbors directly. We'll send it out on social media and what the website, et cetera. And communicating with first responders as well. And I want to thank Adam Hotelling, the Highway Superintendent for the town, who has made some space available for staging on their site. It's sort of a central location. That's it for announcements from me. Anyone else?
I have one correction from last week's meeting. I made a misquote on the STR permit recommendation from the committee. I had said the permits were $700 apiece and Liddy had actually recommended $500 for them.
Thank you for that correction. Okay, continued budget discussion. We welcome our village accountant, Michelle Ascalillo. Talk us through. Thank you for bringing Midnight Oil and getting us to today.
Thank you. So here we are. Lot many changes after last week. So I thought it would be best to just run through a summary of some big items that we've talked about and things that have changed from last year's budget. You know, not really in this iteration, we've already talked about like smaller things like we have gas every year, electric every year. And talk about things that weren't in the budget. Run through a summary. Any questions? And then we'll take up the next.
What's the fund development?
The general fund. Okay. So for the general fund, the revenue. Throughout most of these discussions, the tax rate increase has been about 2.4%, which is half the maximum levy that the village is allowed to levy. It's kind of where we started and it's kind of where we landed. But if we want to make changes to that, we just need some recommendations on reasons to increase it or reasons to decrease expenses for revenue changes. Parking meter revenue on Main Street and parking permits are new to the budget this year. There was a small amount of Main Street parking in last year's budget due to, you know, some delays in working things out, but now we know that it's going to happen. The budget projections are still a little conservative starting in September, but they're much larger than before they were. And they're budgeted at $4 more.
So $4 on Main and in the lot?
The lot in this version of the budget, there are no changes. So the lot as currently is $1.50 an hour during the week and $2 on Saturday, Sunday and certain Monday holidays or holidays in general.
Can we revisit that now or do you want to go through the presentation and come back? We had in earlier parking discussions talked about raising that rate.
The lot.
Yeah, that's a lot as well and staggering. So the lot was slightly cheaper than Main Street to incentivize people to go there, but definitely providing more income than we're getting from that lot right now.
Yep.
I mean, I can, it was 353?
I think three at the lot on the weekends and then raising the weekdays to 250 would be my recommendation.
And there's also a longer allowable time at the lot, which is one of the reasons people want to park there.
That's right. There's, you can do 24-hour parking there.
I'm in favor of that. That goes well. How'd you come to 250 for?
So it was 150. We were raising a dollar on the weekends and we raised a dollar on the weekdays. We could, you know, do two instead of 250, so $2 on the week.
No, I like 250.
Okay.
We have a time limit on Main Street during the week.
Yeah.
And so that's something that we can enforce as well more. And more can you should enforce well. And that would again push people to repaying that a lot. I'm just trying to think why would, why would somebody pay?
Right, like you're somebody who's visiting for a couple hours. You can always stay for two to three hours, three hours. They can pick a limit on Main Street.
Yeah.
Even on weekdays when we're not metering.
Well, I'm seeing visitor ship increase all through the week.
Yep, for sure. Okay. Does that, so that will change your projection a little bit?
Right. So I can't do that off the top of my head.
And we want like a 76% fill rate on Saturdays and not Sundays.
But that would change if we increase the revenue. There will be an increase to some expenses because, you know, the current it's roughly 12, 13% of all revenue brought in has a matching expense. But I can work on that before Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Also revenue, what's new to this year's budget is occupancy tax revenue, also starting in September. And then something that we talked about is C Street revenue, so that's in there. But assuming again that they don't have a full calendar, we took out some trips for earlier in the season or translations.
And C Street has reached out this week. I've asked them to put in a proposal.
Okay.
We're already asking.
Specific changes from last week that we didn't talk about, but I I talked through with Jeff and, you know, STR, we didn't have any revenue for permits. And in the beginning I was hesitant for it. But I think five is a comfortable conservative number. Five permits, five applications to up the revenue a little bit more. You know, I know that we have a cap of 40 and, you know, there's probably maybe, I don't even know how many operating at this time. But if there's five, at least it's budgeted for, we know it's coming. We just don't know how many yet.
I think it's fair to have a number there.
And they increased the penalty on taxes slightly. Three or 10 penalties have always been a little bit more than where they've been landing, so I just updated things at 750 or 1,000.
Just late fees on village taxes. Okay.
On the expense side. Overall summary, we talked about, there's a 2% salary increase for most of the hourly lines. It excludes elective officials. There's an addition of one full-time employee for Village Hall. Attorney fees have increased, assuming that general advice may increase with the fuel trail coming and an increase in prosecuting services. So that that attorney would be working two nights per court instead of one. STR compliance software. Parking meter kiosks and handheld devices, but only.
The STR compliance software, that is the with four of the modules, not five.
Correct. It's missing the occupancy term right now.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's good. The parking meter kiosks and handheld devices. For that would be three kiosks and two handhelds. This is for annual software licensing, internet, whatever is needed, not the purchase. The purchase would be coming hopefully out of fund balance in this year's budget. Police technology in the budget is body cameras, the new CAD system and radio upgrades. Those are going to be reoccurring costs.
Say that again, sorry.
Body cameras, the CAD system and the radio upgrades. So two of them.
Thank you.
I'll have an extra one.
I have it.
The radio upgrades and the CAD system are driven by the county. The, and something that we talked about, but it wasn't in the budget last week. The dormitory grant from Salem-Gale for Village Hall repairs. The grant is 250 for assumption purposes, half of it maybe for next year. So I put the I put the expense in as 125 and I put the revenue in as 250. So the budget is not balanced.
Okay, so that explains the number.
So that explains the extra 125. So that just comes out of fund balance, the 125. It's a fund balance contribution is at 400 and something. It should be 300 and something.
And so the preparation of, the consultancy preparation of the existing condition survey is accounted for for the next cycle, for the next budget season, out of that 125.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We will post the corrected budget tomorrow morning. What you have in here is off by.
I mean, it'd be a miracle and amazing to find another $125,000.
I double counted something. My fault. It's already fixed and it will be posted in the morning. So if you're looking at an overall general fund number, the expense number, I'll read it for the record right now. So the total general fund budget will be 3,335,935. That is the right number.
Thank you.
Fund balance expenses allocated is 300,000 right now. And that's going towards professional services, engineering, a Department of State consolidation grant. The Village Planner, which is only at 3,000, may need to be higher to finish out some work. Both code update and LWRP as the next one.
So I had followed up with Ted Fink thinking that the next logical step after finishing the code update is finishing the LWRP. And there is a, there is a path to completion laid out in the LWRS. And so I asked Ted to give, I've got it with me here actually. I asked him to give a sense of what that has looked like in other communities. We're going to need grant money to do, to do it fully. Just second to find the email. This is based on work in he did on an LWRP for Red Hook. The update, the GIS work was about 8,000. The legal work was 5,000 and the planning consultation was about 100 hours of, for, for about $12,000. And, and I should note that he has not increased the rate he charges the village since 2009. So we are getting a bit of a, we're getting, we're getting a bit of a deal on expert.
So you see 2009?
2009, that's right.
Wow.
That is a generous.
He's still working really hard.
Working really hard. We've been meeting three days a week and really high quality.
Sure.
Yeah. So that's, that's more than than we're going to pull out of our budget. But I think you're right, Michelle, that, that having some cushion on continuing services menu.
So there'd be three options. One would be, well, four options. We can increase taxes. We can take expenses from somewhere else. We can increase contribution from fund balance. Or there's a, a large fund balance contribution already for village-wide repairs and improvements that have yet to be determined. We could just shift some of that 244 over to planner if we didn't want to touch anything else in the budget. So maybe we'll come back to that as a decision point, actually walk through some of the things. Also from fund balance is some storm drain work and a little bit of extra miscellaneous payment. Specific changes from last week, we talked about added for the CAD. I made a few decreases to personnel services lines based on executive session. A decrease shared services cleaning and increased facilities cleaning and that'll come I think it's later on in the agenda, the cleaning quotes. But I did increase facilities cleaning in here. That was 2,240. We increased garbage for six months. It was at four, made it six. And then I made a lot of minor adjustments to some lines, fine tuning, rounding, $50 here, $20 here. Change like that. Is there anything in the general fund that anybody thinks is missing? Shouldn't be there, should be there?
The, the planning consulting service is the only thing that I see missing. Others? Really well done.
So moving on. So then again, before we move on, if there's no other comments on the general fund, I guess we should decide now what to, how to fund the planner. And make a final decision on the fact sheet.
There'll be public comment at the end, right? What should we take first? I would be, I would, I'm pleased that we're able to stay at half the levy rate and I'd like to be able to do that. I would rather use some of that general fund allocation if we need it. We also don't, we don't really have a timeline on that work. We're, we're getting through the code update now. So, you know, it's possible it would be further out in the year. And we'll have a better picture of, of the general fund use by then and how many projects we've got through, et cetera. And hopefully in that time we can do some grant exploration too.
So could we keep it at the number that we have and then if later in the year? The
Keep which thing?
Keep the line item for the planner at the cost that it is now. So as not to change, keep everything level at, at the way it's set right now.
I'd be inclined to increase at least that specific line item because even if we, the village gets a grant, there's going to be some prep work to get to it. And the 3,000 thought was, you know, sparring type is mostly on code. Then if that spills over into June, you know, pending a service comment or things like that. So if we didn't want to change taxes, revenues, expenses, the village-wide repair of 244 maybe shift you know, 7,000 or something, 5,000 to 7,000 over.
I think you both have that.
Let's do five, six right in the middle. Add six to the village planner line and take six from village-wide repairs. Change of net zero to the budget. So then the tax rate. I've heard mayor's comments at 2.4, it's half the maximum levy. Everyone else comfortable with that? Should we try and really get it lower, raise it to fit more things in? I want everybody to feel comfortable with the budget that, you know, gets presented.
I feel comfortable. I, I was concerned that we would be looking at higher numbers and I'm very glad that we're not. We have a lot of increases in expenses and regular expenses, not, not frivolous expenses, but chemicals for the water treatment plant and sledge hauling and like things that we have to do for public health and public safety and that makes a difference.
Well, that speaks to water and sewer.
Yes. For example, poorly chosen again, but we do have, we do increase expenses, right? We're, we're actually, we have brought in, we have brought in professional engineers to help us with road projects that have been put off for years and years. Trying to move those projects forward, so.
In addition, we've gone to great lengths to increase revenues in places that we can and push that forward. So it's not like we're pushing all of the burden onto our taxpayers. We're balancing it out by finding revenues with meters and things like that. So I feel comfortable with it as well.
So we're going to leave it at that. I will work on the parking meter lot and see what that might do.
Great.
It should come down, but I just don't know how much.
Okay. Thank you. Now to water and sewer. My excellent example is sledge hauling applies. Sledge hauling applies. Well, yes, actually that's, that's a really good point that you bring up. We are, we are increasing revenues, but we're also taking action on issues that we know to be quality of life issues. The garbage cannot be left, not picked up. It can't be left on the streets all weekend. And we recognize that. This is not the ideal situation that we're funding that out of, out of village funds, but it's where we are right now. And it's a better alternative than leaving garbage on the streets.
So let's start with water. Knowing water, there's no changes to the usage rate, but as discussed, there's an increase of the flat rate for $10 per quarter. That would be $15 per quarter for those outside of the village, the village of Cold Spring. Fund balance allocation is 31,000. That's for engineering and some fire hydrant replacements. Everything else is being paid through the, the operating, the sewer, the water rents and the water fee.
I thought we had discussed raising the usage rate to 330, I think, or 230?
We had talked about it in 10 seconds in tweets. It was very small, but I thought we.
We talked about that two weeks ago and then last week when we went over it, it wasn't in the summary, so I didn't keep including it. Everything worked now without it. If we were to do that, some engineering would come from operating instead of fund balance? Comments?
I had, I had actually missed that it didn't track through to the next. I mean, so it would be on water 66.
25 is the new flat rate and then you were proposing to raise the usage to 332. I mean, would that drop out?
And that does allow you to shift, to shift to operating, which is
Engineering.
Yep, yep, some of the engineering. If we're making, if we are making the numbers work now, I'd rather not, I'd rather not do that. Any other thoughts?
That's my preference.
Okay.
As long as you feel like it's appropriate in the allocation between fund balance and
The next year.
And operating and
Yes.
And so when we talk about engineering coming out of fund balance, it's not all of the engineering. It's just a small portion of it. So a lot of the engineering we were able to fit back into the budget, which in years past it hasn't been. It's, you know, with the dam engineering, that's not going away. Like it's a one-time project, but it's not going away for several years. So that's something that's built into the budget. This 16,000 engineering coming out of fund balance would be like a one-off project. You know, so it doesn't include the filters because that's being covered by ARPA. Matt had wanted to do either some pump replacements or can't think off the top of my head. There was two, the dehumidifier in the water plant, those two projects, those would be like a kind of like a one and done with the engineering. So those would be more comfortable coming out of fund balance.
Yeah, and we talked, we discussed that last week. They, the, that elements of engineering are recurring and some elements are one-time and we were comfortable with that in the first discussion, so I would leave it.
The cleaning is included. Van interest is 4% and I did include that extra 185 of borrowing that we've been talking about. The extra interest is included group. Reiterating overall in the water fund, you know, engineering costs are going up, chemicals and electricity. And then state retirement is going up. In the past, water and sewer haven't always had the, they've had a smaller share of the total bill. But as, you know, employee statuses change and things like that, it's just reallocating the expense to where it should be. The pension's on, you know, a year lag on the bill anyway. So it's catching up with now. Sewer side. We're going to hear some of the same things again. Here, no changes to the clot rate, but an increase in the usage rate by 76 cents per thousand gallons. Fund balance here, 42,500. That's going to be for sewer line inspections and cleaning. Equip, equipment replacement if something goes down. Minor equipment repairs, not the full amount budgeted for, and a little bit in engineering. So towards the future, the goal would try and have some of that sewer line inspections brought back into operating.
Okay.
But as we've talked about, there's a large chunk that needs to be done, so we have to do more to get it to be on a reoccurring, a smaller cycle. Cleaning is included for the sewer fund, van interest again, 4% overall. The largest drivers here, the sledge hauling, the electric and the state retirement are the largest increases over last year.
Are we getting responses to the bid?
I haven't been issued yet.
Haven't been issued yet.
I actually emailed Will before. I can leave anything else now.
Okay.
Comments on water and sewer?
Thanks for making it work.
Yeah.
Yeah. First of all, the budget.
Any other questions on anything budget related?
And we I think it looks, I think it looks really great. I'm glad that we were able to add we finished one month again and get it done without raising the tax. So that's one.
And I think we've made smart choices. Moving things around, recognizing that services cost. And we have to cover those costs. So do you need to be part of any of the discussion of the main bids? Yeah, good. And then we'll get to home.
Do you want to move the quotes?
It's okay, I'll stop.
I don't mind moving it around so that Michelle can, can leave earlier.
I'm going to save for public comment.
Okay. Okay, so as we move into item four, board business. So first is Resolution 23 establishing sewer usage rate increase. Laura, would you like to move this one?
Sure. Resolution 0823 establishing rate increase for usage of the wastewater system. Following resolution was offered by, or Rosie, for adoption and seconded by
Second.
By the Fatty to it. Whereas an increase in the sewer usage rate is recommended to cover the system operating and maintenance costs. And whereas users of the sewer system are currently charged a rate of $1.24 for 1,000 gallons used. At a workshop meeting on March 29, 2023, the Board of Trustees proposed an increase in the usage rate to $2 for 1,000 gallons used. Now therefore be it resolved, the sewer, sewer usage rate is hereby set at $2 for 1,000 gallons used effective July 1, 2023.
Carol Colbo, Trustee Rosie, Trustee Patty, Trustee Selva, Trustee Wood, and Mayor Paul.
Hi.
Which will be acted on this stage by Laura and Fanny.
That's just Resolution 9, 2023. Eliza, would you like to move it?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 9, 2023, establishing increase to flat rate for the water system. The following resolution was offered by myself for adoption and seconded by
Second.
Creeps Woods to which, whereas an increase to the water flat rate is recommended to cover the system operating and maintenance maintenance costs. And whereas users of the water system are currently charged with following flat rates in village of 5625 per assessed unit per quarter. Out of village, $84.38 per assessed unit per quarter. And whereas at a workshop meeting on March 29, 2023, the Board of Trustees proposed an increase in the flat rate rental rates as followed in the village, additional $10 per assessed unit per quarter. Out of the village, $15 per assessed unit per quarter. Now therefore be it resolved that the water flat rate is established as follows effective 7/1/23 in the village at 6625 per assessed unit per quarter and out of the village at $99.38 per assessed unit per quarter. And.
Trustee Rosie.
Hi.
Trustee Patty.
Hi.
Trustee Selva.
Hi.
Trustee Wood.
Hi.
Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Officially adopted on this date by a vote of five zero.
Some. In the sake of getting Michelle out earlier, why don't we move the discussion on quotes up? And then I would suggest that I believe that the public comments are related to budget. We can take public comment after that, so we can get Michelle home. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move to item 4E. A discussion on quotes for body cameras. Put the piles a bit. Michelle, you want to walk us through the 10% issue that Axon?
Oh, so Axon provided a quote for seven body cameras with storage licenses, usage fees, everything. Amplified over a five-year period. With the equipment purchasing, you paid more upfront in the first year. There is a slight increase, 3% for every year on the contract. Amplification does not include financing, it's just spreading it out because it's a five-year plan. So the warranty, included in the warranty is new body cameras, new equipment, docks and that. In the middle, you get them upfront, you get them in the middle cycle, then you get them at the end of the cycle when the contract's over, and then you still have them. You know, even if you don't renew the warranty for continued data. Axon had a promotion, they have a state contract, they give a state contract pricing. They also added a 10% discount promotion that was set to end after their first quarter on March 31st. They've given us a courtesy to extend that 10% because they know we've been talking about it. And we have that state grant. If it's approved this week, they'll honor that 10%. If not, we'll go back to regular state contract pricing, which is still at a discount from regular outcome pricing. But they're offering an extra 10% now. Which has been in the quote, they prepared this quote back in February, and this is the one that, you know, we've been talking about all along.
And I'm going to make clear that these would not be used until a policy for use is in place. So we're, we're discussing the purchase now, but we'll have further public discussion about use policy before there are use by the office. Any questions on this particular item?
State again, how many cameras we're getting, three, six, seven, or eight?
That's what was requested on the New York State, right? New York State offered the village 2,000 per bundle, $14,000.
And that request was made based on having, having backup, but also when we have large events and we have multiple officers on duty.
Let me just explain, the quote shows a discount summary. Discount's like almost $8,500, which is, it's more like a 20% discount, it's like 10%.
It's 10% off the line items, but they also threw in some training. So they, the training is usually offered at a discount, but they added it to the summary. So training is free, I think. I don't know exactly what kind and might be virtual, but that's part of the discount.
Like average stadium.
Right here, okay.
Thank you for following up on that. Any further questions or discussions on this item? Okay, I would make a motion to accept the Axon pricing for body cameras. And acknowledge that these will not be in use before a policy is adopted by the village board. That is my motion. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Cleaning services, everybody, Eliza?
Right, so we met like three different cleaning services. They were all excellent candidates. Through Christine's kind of the building service, and the prices reflect that. Night Owl is somewhere in between, they have more staffing capabilities. And then Adams is basically a one-man show, but he's used at M&amp;T Bank. He's been working there for 10 years, he works at Magdino, he works at Boston Bell. So he has excellent references and, you know, proven to be trustworthy.
He's currently cleaning the public bathrooms for us now.
That's right, so his prices have been the best. We went out to him and asked if he would be able to accommodate our hours in all the facilities. At first he was having a trouble, trouble meeting the village halls hours, but he actually said he could change his schedule around to facilitate working in the village hall and operating hours. So I would make a motion to accept the bid from Adams. Cleaning service. And it's depending, the price is dependent on how much we use, but it's quoted at 26,430, which is high, and it would be coming down after we adjust for the visitor restaurants that are only going to be weekends and holidays.
We priced, we priced it both ways to see what that would look like. And discussed last week having the roadways or facilities crew continue during the week and the awarded bidder clean on the weekends.
That's right.
He's lowest across the board anyway, and.
And in no quantity.
Yeah, it has excellent reference.
And Michelle, the, this is what is in the budget now?
Yes, we want to run that a little. Real quick, village halls included, police departments included, fire is not, water is included, wastewater included, highway included. Visitor center restrooms, five days excluded. Visitor center, two days a week, January and March is excluded. Mayor's Park excluded. One-time deep cleaning fees will be paid out of this year's budget, assuming he starts now. So I didn't include the deep cleaning fees, but they're okay for expenses through May 31st.
Were visitor center weekends and holidays included?
Yes.
The one item that I would like to discuss for change is highway. It's, it's a chunk, it's, it's a chunk of money. And, and we are, we are, they were using that team to clean the public bathrooms. So I think that the facility cleaning there, given especially the fact that it is a constantly open location. I think we should leave that in facilities group, that item.
I think that just means it'll never get done. We had discussed maybe doing it once a month instead of.
Dropping the numbers.
Times a month for them, but I feel like if we want them to have clean and reasonable environment to work in, we should provide them with that much.
And did you talk with John, with any of the bidders about what that would look like on a less frequent basis?
Yeah, on a once a month, it would be the, the deep clean rate. So it'd just be $100 a month rather than 45, three times, four times a month, or four to five times a month. So it drops the price by about half.
Okay, any other thoughts on that?
I apologize, I should have thought about this when you were going through the process, it just occurred to me. With Adams as a one-man shop, does he address or make any provisions for if he's sick or when he's vacation or unavailable?
That's, I don't have, I don't know. I would expect he has a backup person, but. Yeah. I can reach out to him and find out, but it's never been a problem. And like I said, he has very reliable customers that depend on him all year round. So I imagine he has some solution for it.
We didn't have any issues with him not cleaning last summer. He was, he was here when he was supposed to be here.
And he signed the contract.
He's got to start it up when. Do we want to resolve the question on highway?
Yeah, I was, I was in agreement with you on, on this. And I've been thinking about it, and I think we should definitely put in for minimally the deep cleaning. What I thought about was like, do you want any of us to go to our workplaces? Do they expect us to clean our bathrooms? You know, like that's generally not the case, though I think in this case that it's sort of a reasonable assumption for us to make about them as well. Even though I'm fully granting that they are the ones who are cleaning the public restrooms during the week. I think minimally deep cleaning is fair.
You mean a once a month?
Yeah.
So we're going, it, right now it's once a week. So can we do it every other week? I mean, how bad can it get?
I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty filthy, but it's.
But it's pretty filthy because it's never been cleaned or it's.
Yes, it's a combination of having not been cleaned and it is, there are open bays and you have people with muddy and salty boots going in and out all the time. It's not, I mean, it's never going to be as clean as village hall. It's pretty rough down there. It's not just the bathroom that we're talking about, it's, it's, it's Buggies workspace, it's the office, which is filthy, it's filthy.
So and things like there's like an eye washing station, if there's a clinical issue and someone needs to wash their eyes and it's not, you know, you couldn't use it, it wouldn't actually help you. So things like that, where like we should be providing these basic cleanliness things for emergencies.
Twice a month. I think I feel, I, I feel, I hear, I hear the point you're making, and Eliza. I could, I could be comfortable with twice, twice a month, a deep clean and then an initial deep clean and then twice a month.
Hell, cause, you know, I mean, if it really isn't looking like it should, then we can have another conversation.
There are also some repairs that need to be made in that bathroom and that we need to, that needs to be, that needs to be passed to make those repairs in that bathroom. The wall, the wall's in really rough shape.
I'm, I'm in favor of including cleaning, so. Have a suggestion of every other week.
Good compromise.
I think, I mean, probably once a month deep clean and twice a month regular clean may have a pretty similar.
Are we talking about, I think, what I understood us to be talking about is an initial deep clean and then every two weeks maintenance clean.
I know, but Eliza had said that if it was once a month, it would be the one.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Clean, which is $1,200. And that's similar to if you divide the highway by two.
Yes.
So it's probably the same.
Right, and I feel like the every other week after the deep clean. Okay, I'm comfortable with that, having talked it through. No, motion, make a motion, so would you like to make a motion?
Motion to accept a bid from Adams, building maintenance for cleaning of the village hall, the Cold Spring Police Department, the water treatment facility, the wastewater plant, the highway department with one deep clean and every other week cleaning visitor center bathrooms on weekends.
On favor? Yes, quietly.
It was me as I was chucking on a sheet rock.
I would like to say thank you to you because this was something that we wanted to accomplish last year and just couldn't get done. But bundling, bundling together the cleaning and making sure that we have clean workspaces in all the facilities is, I think, real accomplishable. So thank you, Will. Okay, we're just going to listen to Eliza for a while, parking kiosks.
Yeah, all right, so we got three bids in for parking kiosks. The three companies were ITS, which is a partner company, 42, Devo, which is the company that we've used in the past and we have one kiosk, probably in a shed somewhere that wasn't as successful as we hoped it would be. And then McKay was the third. Between the three, I would recommend accepting the ITS, although it is the highest priced bid when combined with its enforcement item, which we will discuss next. It's actually a better, better price and a better deal, and you only get that, that price with the bundling of the two.
We talked that through and then we can come back to each item.
Yeah, so there, they have an enforcement system and kiosk system that will, all of these will work with our current park mobile dial-in app option with signage on the streets for metering. But the ITS system or the T2 system is probably the best in terms of its software. Sort of the way it communicates, it works with the DMV, so if officers scan a plate, they'll get, you know, instant data from the DMV. It provides a lot more like scanning and things like that for free as part of its service, whereas the other ones like, well, the other services would not provide those for free, you'd have to pay a lot more to get that back. So it gives you a lot more for your money, basically, through the T2 system.
And I think Michelle had asked about other municipalities and you did some, you and Larry both did some poking, looking at what other municipalities use. And the answer is municipalities around us aren't necessarily using the technology, but they're not dealing with the same issues that we are in the village, and I think that's, that's important. We're trying to manage a very local condition and provide revenue. And I, I, I think, we, I think we all agree that coming out of the gates, it needs to work well.
Great. So I think, you know, in ultimately we want this, yeah, just be really easy, really user-friendly, really successful. And looking at the three different options for the kiosk, this was definitely the cleanest, the user-friendly, the simplest and the most elegant design. So I would make a motion to accept the bid from ITS for the three loop Cosmo CC model.
I asked, oh, I have a thought, I'll be more, but I see the filler powered on the second one, are they all filler?
They are all filler powered, so there's no hookup. Yep, they all will just go on the concrete sidewalk, that's the installation, just need the flat surface.
And how about looks of the ITS?
Definitely the best looking, there's color options we can pick from. I can show you, there's, yeah, I mean, though, that would just be one more thing for people to have opinions about.
Well, in that, in the public record, for, for clarity, these are identified as being used in Fort where this, it's actually Port Chester. So if you've gone to, if you've gone to concerts at the cap, that's the system there, and it's super easy.
That's what it looks like.
So that's here too.
It comes in gray, black, pebble gray, racing green, marine blue, citrus yellow. If we want one of these fancy colors to make it really identifiable on the sidewalk. Those are options, although that may cause us to wait. We'll see, I, I could look, go out on that if you guys want to pick a color, but the standard is charcoal gray. Positive, right?
So there is a motion. So there is a motion. We have a second, seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay.
Alright, so.
So now to the handheld portion that you were just discussing.
Yes. Um. So I got actually four quotes, two from Civic Smart on their two pricing options that got a. All-in-one device with a Samsung with a printer attached, um, which was, uh. A bit more expensive and then they had an option where you'd have this, the Samsung and then a like printer that clips on your belt that are separate. Um, the savings there wasn't amazing and generally the price from Civic Smart was really prohibitive. Um, front parking was the other, um, another option and they all, all three use Samsung Galaxy 22. So basically this is a device that it has a printer attached to it. Um. But the best quote came in from Up Safety, which is T2 and, um, ITS's partner company. Um, using the same software and when bundled, um, with their kiosk, the price comes in at, um, nine thousand three hundred twenty-nine. For two units, which we, um, had requested and Larry said it would be good to have two. In case we have two enforcement officers on the street and or just to have a backup.
And also to have the officer on patrol, have it in the car.
That's right.
Yeah.
Which can be used all week long.
Exactly.
Instead of this one have a breaker on it, that's right.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, so I'd make a motion to accept the bid for nine thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the two units. Um, annual service fees would be seven thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. On favor?
Hi, hi, opposed?
Hi.
Bye, any opposed? Last item, thank you very much for all of that, Eliza.
Thank you, that was really helpful.
Um, okay, next is another long outstanding fix, um, which is the lights at the dock. Um, the dock, the dock, dock lights were donated in two thousand twelve. Um. All the land trust. And they were quickly vandalized and they've been left sitting. Um, and we had explored the option of. Another donation of lights and, and my recommendation is that, um. The village have. Take care of it on its own and not have accountability to, to a donor. We are accountable for ourselves for the, for the lights. Um, and so I worked with James Hartford, who was the, um, architect, who did the design of the new fence and the lighting. In two thousand twelve and we, we looked at options for replacing the lights with. Exactly the same light and then looking at options. Um. Where we landed, we have three quotes, we live with, it's a Canadian company, um, First Light. And their model, um, the PLB bodder, it's not, again, it's not the cheapest of the options, but it meets. The particular needs of the use application in Cold Spring, so it's got, uh, a higher inundation rating than the other bollards we looked at. And it also has, um, special construction so that it is more vandal resistant. Um, and it is also built for marine, it has a marine grade finish, so it kind of ticks all the boxes for being along. Um. As partially salty, can't think of the word right now.
Cool.
Brackish, brackish, thank you. A brackish river, yeah. Um, so. Where. I wanted to show you two, um. What, another reason that I feel good about this company is the range of light temperatures that are available. Um.
Oh, wow.
It's, it's a really special space down there, um, and you want to, we want to make sure that we pick the, the right light temperature. The recommendation for it is, um. Extra warm white, um, to be more like a starlight. Um, and not, not cold, which can happen with LED lights. We want to avoid that. So, um. Any discussion first?
No, I, I want to thank James Hartford and you for doing the research and finding a better option, um, to go forward with it. I think the last ones were an elegant design and it was unfortunate that they were vandalized and easy to continually vandalize. But looks, from the looks of this, it's going to be more durable and much harder to damage. So I think this is a great solution.
And we need, we need light for safety at the waterfront. It's been dark, it's been dark for too long.
Are they, uh, we've been worrying about dark sky.
Yes, they are dark sky compliant and that was.
Lately.
Part of the original design was that they, they'd be, so there used to be big shepherd's crooks, like really tall shepherd's crooks on the dock. Um, and this came forward as part of a dark sky initiative to, to lower the light so that when you're standing at the waterfront, you can see. The profile of the mountain, um, and your, you know, your eyes can adjust to a low level as they're meant to do naturally and see the environment around you. Um, and like the original lights, these, these are, um, symmetrical light as opposed to being cast in one direction. Um. So it's, it's pools of light cast down and completely downcast.
Great. That's a really good choice.
Um. Any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, it's the only one where it doesn't say shipping included.
The shipping is in.
Oh, I see the shipping, yeah, okay, yeah.
So there, there, there's not a huge range. Um, in them, but I think we have to focus on. On quality, especially in that location.
Yeah, and I don't think the price is that much different, that it's really cost prohibitive. For the difference of quality and, and durability.
This is just for the purchase of the lights. Um, we need to figure out the labor of getting them in, um. We believe that Bugsy can do this with assistance from an electrician, can do the concrete work. Um, so that, that element, labor isn't included in this. This is just the purchase of the lights. Okay, well, then I would make a motion to accept the bid from First Light for the, uh, First Light Technology PLB bollard. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Great. Then. This can also be delivered at the end of the budget here, which is right here. Okay, well, that is the end of our items on budget. Um. So I'm gonna. Take public comment now. Um, Marie, did you?
Yeah. Couple of questions. On, uh, parking permits. I assume these are the residential parking permits?
Correct.
Okay. Also, uh, income is four thousand dollars.
Correct.
And I assume that the, um, cost of a parking permit is thirty-five dollars. You know, there are situations where it's fifty dollars, but just going with thirty-five dollars. That would say that. They are. Hundred and twenty? Parking permits that are going to be issued?
That I don't know off the top of my head. I do have a spreadsheet and I can follow up with the captain.
That works, alright. So Eliza provided a spreadsheet, that's a foil request. There are a hundred and fifty-five spaces on the eleven streets. And that would come out to be five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I know that I was conservative, um, I don't know, we assume the maximum allowable because not everybody's going to purchase one at ten.
Well. When during the parking, um, discussion in twenty twenty-one, the, um, the point was saying that. That more permits. Would be sold than there are spaces on the street because of the likelihood that everyone. That purchased a permit is going to park on, on the eleven streets at the same time. So I would suggest that the number be increased. As a second question, are the parking permits for the, um, the area west of the, um, railroad tracks? Included in this number?
No.
What were they included?
They're included with the C Street number under miscellaneous permits and vendor permits.
Shouldn't they be included under parking permits?
They probably should. And now that we're making our whole mind for residential.
If I remember correctly, those permits are three dollars a year.
We're not for two years. For two years.
It was a dollar fifty a year. And these are thirty-five dollars a year. It seems like. More than I want to revisit the quest of the parking permits west of the railroad.
As you know, Marie, that requires a code change and as you know, that requires code and fee and, um, fee. Um.
Yes.
Fee table change. And so we will be having a public hearing related to modifications in chapters one twenty-six and one twenty-seven.
Okay.
So we have not, we have not changed that rate on the fee table yet because we're holding for the public hearing on one twenty-six and one twenty-seven.
Okay. The same thing, the return rental permits are calculated to be three thousand dollars and chapter one hundred hasn't been changed. So. You're making so.
That's a fair point, Marie. We can modify that.
The, the comment about the parking permits west of the railroad tracks, um, it's just. For your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Onto fines and forfeited bail. Is that parking tickets?
Is part of it.
Okay, part of it. So that number goes up by seven, by ten percent or seven thousand dollars. From seventy thousand this fiscal year into seventy-seven thousand next fiscal year. With the amount of money that has been brought in by parking on Main Street. It would seem to me that the number of tickets that would be issued with the handheld LPRs. Would increase significantly more than ten, more than seven thousand dollars. So I sug, I suggest for your consideration that. You rethink that number, that it could potentially be higher, particularly because I believe in line. You're with me? In the parking enforcement personal services, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. I believe that's two people.
That's right.
So instead of just one person issuing parking tickets, it has been occurring in the past few years. We're going to have two people issuing parking, parking tickets with handheld devices. Not just for Main Street, but also for the residential parking on the eleven streets. So I think that seventy-seven thousand number should be. Looked at again.
Thank you. Um, I think you're aware that Michelle does take a very conservative approach on revenue and as, as you know, from your work with the parking committee. The first year out of the gates. It's going to be when we learn a lot about what we do get. So I would, I think we would all love to project more income. And we hope that we do have more income via tickets and, and parking fees and we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, you're, the, the estimate for parking meter fees is gone up by a hundred thousand dollars. And I, no argument with that, but I would think that the estimate for fines. That, uh, on, on Main Street and the eleven street should be reconsidered. As part of them, what is the fee going to be? For on-street parking meter violations or RPP violations? Those would also have to go into the master fee schedule. The current fee for the parking ticket at the municipal lot is fifty dollars. I'm guessing that it will be fifty dollars in the residential parking district and fifty dollars on Main Street?
That's.
So just for your consideration, I think, I think you've got, I think you've got ways that you can. Work as reasonably forecast additional income on those two loans.
To the point with the fines and fees, although this year from last year is only up ten percent. If I do, uh, a five-year trend, fines and fees have come down. Um, so it's at seventy-seven. If like didn't have an increase for some parking tickets, that number will have actually gone down from last year. Also to consider, there has been a parking enforcement officer already working, so it's not like you're a hundred percent brand-new revenue stream. So we have, we've taken that into account too.
You, you've got two people now working and they don't have to chalk the ground. They just use their living room yours. And if a ticket get issued, a ticket get, I think you're gonna make money. That's my opinion.
Well, as, as you know, the village isn't in the business of making money. We're in the, in the business of. Raising revenue to offset costs and keep taxes down.
Can say it in your words, which is.
Well, you know that very well, Marie.
Making money. Okay, um, under justice software fees, that two hundred dollars, does that include any necessary software upgrades? For the Justice Department or the installation of the LPR? Um, so LPR data that's going to be coming across to the Justice Department, just a consideration. Um. In the. Okay, in the police page. There are, Michelle and I worked on this. Few years ago, the amount to clothing amounts. For police officers, six hundred dollars, six fifty-seven hundred. In twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there were fifteen allowances. On the payout was fifty-three hundred dollars with a very unusual thirteen hundred dollars to one person. Why?
They were, they were double counted in the same account line. It was two separate people.
Okay, oh, okay. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the allocated amount was eleven hundred two, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Of which today, fourteen hundred and twenty dollars was used. In twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, ten thousand nine hundred dollars is being allocated or something has been used to. This is a question of accounting. Is there a way? I have never seen that entire amount used, the allocation, the clothing allocation. It's typically less than fifty percent used, significantly less than fifty percent used. Is there a way you could pull? That money. So that the budget doesn't have to reflect an expense that exceeds a hundred percent of what is actually used.
That's, that's very creative thinking. As you know, clothing allowances are part of contractual, it's part of the PBA negotiation and that's an interesting idea you put forward.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't change the PBA contract.
But you understand that this reflects the PBA contract.
I do.
Yes, you do.
However, this reflects the, the po- possibility that every single police officer, actually eighteen police officers. Will fully ex, will fully use all of their money.
Which they have the right to do under their contract.
Which they have, and as we can see, trends say they don't. Friends say they use less than fifty percent of the money. So just from a, a budget allocation point of view. Is there a way that you can pro-rate that expense? While still very comfortably providing the money for everybody to get whatever uniform, uh, uh, changes they need, just a thought. I, I don't know how to do it. It would be.
Thank you for the recommendation. I don't know whether it's legal.
Um. In higher. There is an item called siren, which I believe is the electricity for the siren.
I think you know that it is that, right? Yeah.
Siren has not worked since two thousand fourteen or earlier. We are still paying seventeen hundred, sorry. Um, seventeen hundred dollars a year that being allocated.
It was not just the electric.
The electricity.
It's not just the electric, right?
What is it?
As we've talked about before, even though it's in the siren line, um, it's the building monitor. It's a, there's a fire alarm on the actual firehouse.
Uh huh.
That's included in the siren line.
That's seventeen hundred dollars.
No, no, there is electric included, but, um, probably seven hundred of that, six hundred and change is for, um, building monitoring and alerts on their phone.
No problem with that. But Cameron, please, stop sending all this electricity to something that does not respond.
That would have been great for you to take care of while you sat on the board for three terms, but thank you.
I did.
Any other questions?
I did ask someone to investigate that when I was on the board.
Any other questions for you, Marie?
Uh, let me see. Yes. Zoning Board Personal Services. Planning Board Personal Services. And HDR Board, HDRB Personal Services. There's an inconsistency for the allocation.
Correct.
Um. I, I don't understand why the zoning board personal services is twice what was allocated in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And planning.
I made that mistake. I spoke with trustee Staubuck about it and I should have mentioned it.
Okay, so it's been.
The, the zoning and the planning allocations. The, the zoning and the planning allocations are flip-flop.
But we'll be coming back to that for a second. Um, I believe there is concern or consideration that. Oh, so it's flip-flop. So.
When uh zoning should be, should have the least amount of personal services, HGRV should be somewhere in the middle and planning board should have the most.
Um, under dental. One. Thomas is being identified for five hundred dollars. He's what? He was only with the village.
It's probably a name change. It didn't happen.
It's, it's zeroed out, Michelle. It's zeroed out in the, in the year, no use, some year today. It's zeroed out in use. It's, it's a, it's um.
So it, it's a name change.
Maurice, yeah.
No, it's not Maurice. It's Chris. So it shouldn't say Thomas, it should say Chris. But it's the same amount.
It's the same old person.
Yes.
Those are my comments.
It has to be children to pay, care for. Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Next item is.
We released, uh, sorry?
Yeah. Oh yes, Michelle, you're released. Have a good night. Thank you so much.
Happy Easter.
Oh yeah, happy Easter.
Oh, sorry. I don't know. Did you have so?
Mike, did you have any? Budget questions?
Your own.
I did receive, you did send me questions today. I was. Running very busy all day and have not had chance to reply to them, but I will try to do that after the meeting.
Okay, yeah, most of them are non-number questions, but um. What's the final um tax rate levy increase? Is that set now?
We haven't said it yet. Yes, so.
Okay.
We can vote on that.
It's estimated to be a two point four percent increase over last year's tax bills pending the changes of what we discussed tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and so um. For the public hearing next week, that number will change. But that's at and where it's been so far.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, thank you. Um, okay, so Riverkeeper, uh Indian Point actually is the next on the agenda. Um. So, uh, several constituents forwarded a model resolution. That it has been adopted up and down the Hudson Valley related to the decommissioning of Indian Point by Holtek. Um, Holtek is proposing to. Treat the water from the um. Uh. The, the waste pools before releasing it into the river. This is something that has been done. Four years. Um. But not in a great volume. It's just been a, a slow release over time. It is something that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission allows. Um. There is a movement by Senator. Harkam um to modify the amount that is allowable. Um. And it's gained a lot of support from residents and Riverkeeper and, you know, all up and down, all up and down the river. Um, so it, I made some modifications that I think suit. The village, which I'd like to put forward to you um and discuss. And I will say that Senator Harkam did. Hit you with a paperclip. Um, Senator Harkam did, did release a statement today that Holtek has now asked to move the discharge date up from August to May. Um. Which is a, a significant shift. So, so the pressure is on for, for. Alternate solutions to be found. And there are alternate solutions, including um onsite site storage and um. Solidifying the water with a polymer type product that allows it to stay in place rather than. Shipping it to another community. Um, so this is not the only option is the point. Um, so I'll read, I'll read with my modifications into the record and then we can discuss. Um, this is my. So I will, I will make the motion as per second and then we can discussion after. Have discussion after. So Resolution ten twenty twenty three in opposition to the discharge of contaminated water into the Hudson River. Whereas Holtek Corporation, the company conducting the decommissioning of the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant, has announced its intention to release the remaining water. Excuse me, from onsite radioactive fuel waste pools into the Hudson River. And whereas to date, there's been no specific reporting. On the radio nucleide contents of the water, which is likely to be contaminated from the storage of nuclear fuel waste. And whereas although Holtek has proposed pre-release filtration as a solution. To reduce the content of those carcinogenic contaminants to a level in quotes as low as is reasonably achievable, close quote. And this method is allowable by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. And whereas the standards in use for determining safe levels by the NRC are dated. Based on a limited population sample and do not address possible impacts on children. Or women of childbearing age. And whereas the National Academy of Sciences has indicated that there is no verifiable safe level of these isotopes when they are ingested or inhaled. And whereas the pre-release treatment would not remove tritium, also carcinogenic, from the water. And whereas any contaminants in the Hudson. Present the risk of entering the food chain. And whereas in addition, there are seven communities upriver. That source their drinking water from the Hudson River. And whereas the Hudson River is an estuary that flows from north to south as well as. From south to north. And whereas the river also serves as a source of recreational activities and represents a critical economic resource. That will be compromised by the release of the remaining water in Indian Point's radioactive fuel waste pools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees strongly opposes the plan to release over one million gallons of contaminated water from the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant Site into the Hudson River. You have a second? Everybody's diving on it. Okay, um, discussion? Any discussion?
Oh.
Okay.
The video is proposed.
Um, so this is a roll call vote.
Trustee Balty.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee White.
Hi.
Bill Tully.
Hi.
Officially adopted on this date by a vote.
You. Forward that on to our. To Holtek and to our state representatives. Um, and I just want to say thank you to Dana, Assembly Member Dana Leidenberg and um Senator Pete Harkam for championing us. Um, and I will say that this, uh, the county executive has also um made reference to, to his um proposition. I don't know what the legislature has done yet, but in the state of the county address he. Um, mentioned that the, the value of protecting the river as well. Okay, um. Uh, Riverkeeper. So first, before we talk about um. Riverkeeper, I want to give you an update. I met on-site at Dockside with Bugsy and Evan Thompson today. Um, to review, um, now that we are past, we are past early spring, um. To identify what of the rack can be removed. You'll remember our um. Management contract prohibits, prohibits us from removing rack from the shoreline. But obviously post-storm, um, we need to be able to take out. What is beyond normal distribution of rack. Um, and so we wanted to get clear on what it is that um our team is expected to take. What they are expected to leave, to leave. Um, the um agreement, which I'm following up with in writing with Parks, is anything below the high tide mark. Toward the river. It states responsibility, anything above um is ours. That said, um. There are a number of large um pieces of the drake wood that were purposely placed by the landscape architects as benches. Um. And are meant to be left in place. So we photographed those to identify what they are and where. Um. And, uh.
Dogs.
Now we hear you, Michael. That's okay. Um. So, over the next few weeks, there's a lot down there. Um, Bugsy will be pulling what he can and be taking it to the highway garage and chipping. Um, hoping we can borrow the, the town's chipper, um, chipping and mulching and then that can be used around the villages as mulch. Um, the team will be going through Mondays and Fridays through the busy season for garbage collection. Um, and I would say to folks, if you see, if you see garbage that's, that's bothersome and in the way and, and ugly, the river washes up garbage and rack every day. Um, it's your park too. We have a limited staff. We have three and a half people that can't be there every day. If you see garbage. Do everybody a solid, pick it up and carry it. It is a carry and carryout park. Take it out to the garbage bin. Um. Or if you see things that you're concerned about, please, please bring your concerns here to Village Hall. It's a, this is, this is where we can actually make decisions to do things um about it.
Also, if you do clean up, then you can talk about, I can speak about how you clean it up.
So for all those who have concerns about Dockside and we, we know that, that the village cares very loudly, um. There are, there is an opportunity coming up for you. Riverkeeper does an annual sweep. Um, it has been done previously at Little Stony Point. Given all that washed up on shore from the Christmas storm at Dockside, they're proposing to hold their river sweep this year at Dockside. Um, and we'll be inviting volunteers to join them um from nine AM to noon on May sixth. Um. Uh, hoping for eight to twelve volunteers. This is the perfect opportunity um for everyone who has concerns about caring for Dockside to, to step up and help. Um. Although the state owns the site, they did ask um the village consent for, for them to assist us in this spring maintenance and I'm delighted to accept the help. Any minute, any other comments or concerns?
Do you need people to show up or do they need to sign up?
Um, Riverkeeper, Riverkeeper will be doing the um. Uh, advertising about it. So they'll have the mechanism, but we'll, we'll post on our website and on social media as well. Jeff, does this need to be a vote?
You could.
All right, so I make a motion to welcome Riverkeeper for assistance in a spring cleanup at Dockside.
So if I can.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hey, Lillian, we're at the very end. You missed all the good stuff.
Hmm.
Okay, um, so the rec commission item, I actually, I brought my, my pack that doesn't have the name in it with someone else. Introduce us to our rec candidate from the packet.
You're on the left. That's Eric Tipler. Um. And uh. Confirmed, we're U.S. citizens. Um, love the outdoors since childhood. Very excited to join the commission.
And has previous volunteer experience with recreation commissions.
He currently helps run a hiking club for LGBTQ folks based in Beacon, loves the snowshoe. And wants to explore how we can use our parks to promote community in the village.
Sounds perfect.
Yeah.
She'd like to make a motion.
All right. Um, I make a motion to um approve uh a point. Thank you, Eric Tipler, to the recreation.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any votes? Okay.
Um.
Who's the volunteer?
It's really exciting. That, that, that board is, is strong now. So get going with them. Yeah, full compliment and a good, a good team. Um, any other public comment or otherwise? Um. Oh, minutes. Uh. I made some minor suggestions to Jeff. Um, anybody else incorporated?
We're in there too.
Okay.
Motion to approve the first twenty three minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? No, I think what, okay. Um, now, public comment, any remaining public comment? Seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I see a hamburger.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right on. Good night, guys.
Great, thank you. Great.
Great.